I would like to call to order the council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th of 2019. We will first begin with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to say, moment of silence for the community of Norristown and all of the families that were involved. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derek Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonia Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the council workshop meetings from May 22nd of 2019? All in favor? The meeting minutes for May 22nd are approved and passed. Earlier this evening, we had executive session pertaining to a real estate matter. And at this time, we will start the order of business with the presentations. And the presentations will start with the Student Leadership Academy. This happened to be the first Student Leadership Academy in Norristown. It was an eight-week program of Norristown area high school students where they learned about vision, leadership, budgeting, strategic thinking, strategy. It also involves some community involvement in terms of keep Norristown beautiful. And this was an excellent group. They excelled well, very interested and passionate. And they presented last week two presentations, which I'm hoping that council will consider making some decisions when we move forward with the rec center and the Norristown State Hospital project. So at this time, I will step down to the floor and hand out the presentations. But first, I would like to see if any council members have any comments or questions in terms of the program. Councilwoman Jones.
Just wanted to take a minute and commend the high school students and the Young Scholars Program for taking part in the eight-week program. As we mentioned before, these seats will one day be open, and we hope that many of you come and fill these spots and continue to lead Norristown. Thank you.
And I also want to thank the staff. Some of the directors actually came out. I forgot to mention planning. So Jane gave them some insight in terms of planning and zoning, in terms of how to actually acquire property and what to put in specific locations. Mr. Butts, he came in at the end of Week 7, and he also discussed budgeting and financial fiscal responsibility. So it was a job well done and coordinated by all, so it's much appreciated. Oh, sorry. I'm not selfish at all. Or can you tell that I'm eager and excited for the students? Councilwoman Smith.
I'd just like to thank all the students here tonight who participated in the Student Leadership Academy. Every time I hear from students, and particularly students with these projects, I'm very inspired and very hopeful for the future. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Brady.
I too want to congratulate the students for going through this program. I know it wasn't easy and a little overwhelming to learn all of this new information, but it really gives you a glimpse on what happens in the government setting, and it also allows you to set your sights on something that you might not have thought about otherwise. And also, kudos to Madam President for facilitating this session to get it all together. I think anything that puts our students first and allows them to see the potential that they have in the future of this municipality is a good thing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
I also want to say kudos to Madam President, not for just facilitating it, but coming up with that great idea. And I look forward to her actually sponsoring another one. But to the students who actually participated, you know, as you continue to grow and graduate from high school or attend college, you're going to always find the opportunity to step out on faith, do something different, just see what happens. So many young people are surrounded by their families and friends right here in Norristown. And there's going to be opportunities for you to do other things. Don't be afraid to do it. Take that chance, take that leap of faith, as long as it's something that is a positive opportunity, please don't let this be your last time doing it, because this world is vast. There's a lot to learn. So continue doing what you're doing and continue experimenting and exploring the world.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. I mean, Scott Cooper. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to take the opportunity to say something as well as I had a few opportunities to engage these young people. And I think it goes without saying from everybody who has engaged them, both as a part of this program, and certainly as a part of the work that they do in school, that this is an exceptional group of young people. I've had the honor of working with high school students, college students in many states across the country in terms of things that I've done. And I have not found a brighter group, a more inquisitive group, a more innovative group of young folks in all of the places that I've been than I've found in these folks. They were engaging from the very beginning, they were not shy, and I think that there's so much to be said. And I want to say, you are great ambassadors of students, but particularly great ambassadors of the Norristown School District. I think, you know, you, Norristown Area School District, if they wanted to do an ambassadorship program of how great their students are, all they had to do was call you kids out. I mean, you did a fantastic job, and I'm just proud to be affiliated with you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. but I do not see her. She was a very, very intelligent and inquisitive woman. I can say that she actually missed one class, and that was due to a family emergency. And she vowed to stay active in the community. And I know she's already reached out to some of our council folks and some of the community leaders, and she just wants to do more, and she's very passionate. So I'm sorry she's not here this evening. Our next participant we have was the only gentleman in the class who was actually sick, which I was aware of ahead of time, is Joshua Shurmey. Very, very passionate, and I do see him in the near future. One council, very politically passionate. He could argue any of us all down in this room in terms of politics. He's that much involved, not only at local level, but state level. He's very, very passionate as well. Our first, our next student is Siani Sanders. She actually missed one class, and she actually started late. Just by being my, being her mother, it was like, oh my God, why would you do something like this? Or why would you embarrass me? But as she saw the engagement, that's when she became interested in what we were learning and discussing. So she then became engaged, and she actually didn't know her leadership strength until she was actually challenged to go ahead and further engage with the other aspects of council. Our next student is Gloria Torres. She's very passionate, love her personality and her style. She exemplifies leadership in a different way, and what I've told them is, there's more than one way to serve a community, and I too also look forward to seeing you in one of these seats one day. So thank you for all you've done. Our next student is Lenny Duran. She was such, such a pleasure to have in class. At times, she didn't feel as confident, but that's okay, because not all leaders are confident at what they do. So again, with the dynamics that we had, it took the challenging personality to actually dig and pull out her leadership. So I'm very grateful. And actually, I've met Lenny and Gloria about two, three years ago from working with the National Scholars and Mrs. Myers at the Norristown Area High School. So thank you for your time and your commitment. It's much appreciated. If you could stand up there next to Gloria. Our final student is Beatrice Ascension. And Beatrice was always the quietest in the class. She's what I call the quiet leader. So last week with presentations, I mean, she nailed the presentation in terms of answering the questions, filling in the gaps for her peers, and I expect great things from you. Great job, and thank you for your commitment and your time. Is this a good spot, or because we're kind of in the middle of here?
Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Pamela Martin. I'm the founder and director of Expressive Path. I know many of you know me in this room. Some of you don't. I've actually seen some of you in the community that have asked me questions about Expressive Path, so I'd like to just do a brief overview of who we are. So Expressive Path's a nonprofit. We do free creative art and music workshops for 12- to 19-year-olds in middle school and high school. We're 90% mobile. A lot of people don't know that about us. We're based in Center Theater, but we're actually in six main sites that we go into, primarily in the Norristown Area School District. We're a collaborative organization. We visit a lot of nonprofits. Oh, could you hear me?
It's ready.
Okay. Could you hear any of that? Oh, no. Okay. So we do free creative art and music workshops for teens 12 to 19 in Montgomery County, but we're mostly Norristown-based for a couple reasons. One is a Norristown cheerleader, wanting to be a part of the whole revitalization effort. My son went to Norristown Area High School, and I'm just so proud to be a part of things. So we are based in Center Theater, which is also revitalized, and if you haven't seen it, please come see the new theater. It's really gorgeous. We're 90% mobile, so we're going into the six locations where we teach, which is primarily in Norristown School District, but we also work with a lot of nonprofits like Laurel House, Lincoln Center, Central, et cetera. And we do summer workshops at the theater. I might need somebody to be a clicker for me. Okay. So I was recently at one of our teaching sites, and I was working with a young lady painting, and I said to her, what are your specials here, activities besides your academics? And she said, we have two specials, Expressive Path and Jim. And so that made me feel two things. It made me feel happy that we were in the school, but it also made me sad because of the limitations in the arts and musics right now. So a lot of our kids aren't football players, basketball players, and so the arts are so important. I might need somebody else to be my clicker. I'm not so good with this. It's not just clicking, it's... Yeah. Okay. I'll do this. Okay. So these are some of the classes that we offer. Our mentors teach a wide variety of arts, and they come to us to volunteer and say, I teach this or that, and as long as it's feasible and creative, we try to bring it to the schools. We have three programs: Art Education, Mentorship, and Self-Expression. Art Education is tours, lectures, further education, and scholarships. So this is an example of something that we did to help one of our students. We paid for her to record at Rotation Records, and she ended up doing so well, she had a CD release party. She was also asked to perform on two different artists' solo CDs. So she said, thank you for helping me make my dream come true. We also have the Frank and Jane Memorial Scholarship, and that, Frankie J. Martin Memorial Scholarship, and that is dedicated to my parents who believe strongly in education and also music. And so it's for mini grants from January to April, and it's a video application. So the students don't have to be Steven Spielberg, but they just need to have a cellphone or other video equipment where they can make a three-minute video. It's for Montgomery County residents that are registered or accepted to school and that are into creative arts. Our mentorship program, all our mentors are volunteers that are going into the schools. They have full clearances and training, and they do workshops that are usually one to six sessions long, unless it's like a mural, then it's more like 20, and they're typically about an hour to two in length. We have a Tools for Success component. So if you are learning guitar, you can earn a guitar. So you're earning what you learn. So if you're learning guitar, we have mini contracts, and it's learn to clean it, tune it, make all sessions, learn three chords, learn a song, you earn the guitar. So one of our mentors, and I know a lot of you know him from Big Uncle, recently said to me, what it would have meant to me if somebody would have given me an instrument as a teenager, because there really is an impact. These were from Norristown Rotary, and they all have found good homes. These are some of our students and what they created or they earned. Our final program is Self-Expression, so our students have the opportunity to showcase their talents in the community through exhibition and performance, and we help them with prep, guidance, and support. So this is an example of Self-Expression. We were nominated for a Phillies charities grant, and they said, we would like you to come down and do a performance at Citizens Bank Park. Bring your band. And I said, we don't have a band. So we, so we created a band, and we went to Roosevelt School, we found a couple of different performers, we got them together with one of our mentors, and he practiced with them until they were ready. He played bass for them and taught them, you know, what to wear, how to greet the guests, if you forget the words, what do you do, that kind of thing, and they just loved it. We have an annual art exhibition. This past school year's theme was cultural diversity and an anti-drug and alcohol lifestyle. We show at an art gallery every year. So we've been at Cellini Gallery, we were at the municipality, if you remember, last year. This year, we're at Montgomery County Community College, Pottstown Campus, and we've been accepted to Woodmere Art Museum for next year. So these are the students when they were here at the municipality. And these are some of the Norristown Area High School students, actually, you might know some of them, that are showing at Pottstown. And that show was May 23rd. We had our first opening, and that was for students, and so we bussed the students in for the district so they could be able to see the show. And then our closing is June 6th, which is this week, if you can make it, from 6:00 to 8:00 in Pottstown at their West Campus Gallery. This is just what happened at the event. So at the event, people were making art while we were looking at art. They were creating new songs, they were painting. It was cool. And here they are posing, some of the art. In addition to the programs I mentioned, we also accept community service students now, and this is what one of our students recently said to me. I've been really impressed with these young folks. We'd like to give them a chance to do something besides cleaning up, you know, picking up trash and painting and that kind of thing, because we feel that that does not inspire students to want to do something else that's more productive. So we have them help with student projects and so forth. An example is, we did several printmaking projects, and I had one young lady in community service tie them all together and make a gigantic quilt. So she was recognized as one of the people helping with the project. And so this is really why I'm here. So every year, we have a big arts and music festival, and this year, we're partnering with Elmwood Park Zoo. I know you're all familiar with the zoo, and it's our big fundraiser. And so this is an opportunity for our students to showcase their talents. They get to perform onstage, but then they also vend that day. But then we have artists come vend and food trucks and so forth. It's free to the public. This year, we're hoping to have our first beer garden, and so that's one of the reasons why I'm here. Just a plug for volunteers. And just keep in mind that we are looking for a new home. We love Center Theater, but we would like a place in Norristown where we could showcase the student work there and have a gallery and a boutique up front, something quite lovely. So we're looking for a home. This is me. And we're on Facebook and Instagram. Please like us. So do you have any questions about the actual event? Or Expressive Path? No pressure. Hakeem?
I have more of a comment. Thanks for the work that you have been doing, the several years that you've been doing this. I've directly seen students benefit from your program through truancy and school attendance also. I've seen kids through the foster care system gravitate to your program, so keep up the good work.
Thank you. So just, I guess, just briefly about the event. We've been working closely with the zoo. We also talked to Norristown Police Department Officer Bishop about, you know, what we need to do that day to keep things safe. Norristown Police Department is going to vend that day, and they're also going to help with monitoring the safety of the event. We're going to have the beer garden roped off, and there's going to be somebody there checking people as they come in and out, and also making sure they have wristbands on. We're going to have, zoo is going to handle the porta-potties that you need to be, have extra porta-potties because of so many people in the beer garden. If you have any questions?
No. Counsel, any other questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today.
Absolutely. Thank you for all you do for the community. Councilwoman Olivia Brady, do we have any announcements this evening?
Yes, we do, Madam President. So the kickoff to the Free Summer Concert Outdoor Series begins this Sunday, June 9th. The band that'll be playing is the Max Dance Band. There's going to be a Beer Garden by Ideal Brew, and the food truck starts at 7:00 PM at Elmwood Park. Call for participants for Norristown Fourth of July Parade and Block Party. If anybody is interested in participating, please email events@norristown.org. There's going to be a Coffee with a Cop, June 18th, from 8:00 AM at Tim Shell Coffee Shop at 104 East Main Street. Norristown has an updated mobile app. Search Norristown PA to download the free app from the App or Play Store. And just an editorial comment here, it's a great app. You really should go on there to find out everything you need to know about Norristown, and you could do some reporting as well. There are spots still open for donations for the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, which was going to be held on June 11th at the Human Resources Building. Appointments can be made at redcrossblood.org. That's the end of these announcements. Do anyone in council have any other announcements?
Thank you. The Census 2020 will be hosting a meeting here tomorrow night. For all those who are interested, it's called Complete Count, and that is to make sure everyone who resides in Norristown is counted in the 2020 Census. So I am encouraging council to come out, 7:00 PM tomorrow night, to learn all that we need to do in order to be effective in getting everyone counted. And the Census Bureau will be here tomorrow night for that meeting.
Councilman Jones.
I have two announcements. First announcement is a local job fair coming up this weekend. Colonial Electric Supply is having a job fair. They are looking for warehouse associates and drivers. They will be having on-the-spot interviews. So it's this Saturday, June 8th, 201 West Church Road in King of Pressure, and the time is from 9:00 AM to noon. It says, please apply in advance by going to www.conealelectric.com and selecting the careers icon, and also bring a copy of your resume. Second announcement is for a local car show that will take place here in Norristown on June 15th, Saturday. It will be at the Aerie in DeKalb Street Parking Lot. Car show starts at 11:00 and ends at 2:00, $20 per vehicle, and there's also opportunities to vend. More information, you can reach out to Vince, and his number is 484-636-8169.
Thank you. That concludes the announcements. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any communication this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. So we will start with our order of business, beginning with Resolution 19-127, which are the appointments to various boards and committees. Mr. Jones, will you be handling that topic?
Thank you, Madam President. Council, you have before you Resolution 19-127 of 2019, which is a follow-up of council's continuing desire to have qualified residents to serve on Norristown. continuing desire to have qualified residents to serve on Norristown's boards, committees, and commissions. This resolution is a request to have Mr. Matthew Light be reappointed to the Norristown Board of Code Appeals with a term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to consider, I'm sorry, to reappoint Matthew Light to the Norristown Board of Code Appeals? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Rebecca Smith, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 19-127 is passed and approved. The next order of business we have is the Consent Agenda, which pertains to alcohol waiver for Norristown Fourth of July Celebration, also the Norristown Summer Concert Series, and lastly, the Norristown Arts in the Park. Mr. Jones, if you could just please provide a brief summary of those.
Thank you, Madam President. As you stated, these are alcohol waivers. For all of these events, the municipality has historically approved these waivers for the responsible use of alcohol at certain events. We've done this with the Fourth of July, we've done this before with Arts in the Park. And one of the things that we wanted to do this year was add a couple of concerts, a kickoff concert, and then another larger concert later in the year to provide for that. Each of these events will have a controlled area, will require the proper credentialing to get into and out of the area to make sure folks are being responsible in the use of alcohol. And to date, we've had no issues in terms of council approval of these events, in terms of behavior at these events.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Jones?
Crandall, would the alcohol waivers serve as some source of revenue if possible, if we have multiple events throughout the year?
It's a small source of revenue in terms of the vendors who have permits to do business in Norristown, but it really is just an opportunity to provide, an opportunity for entertainment and controlled libations at events for the general good.
Counsel, any other questions? Would a member of council like to approve the consent agenda for the alcohol waivers for those three events that were mentioned for the Fourth of July Celebration? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Rebecca Smith, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is approved and passed. Next order of business we have is building and code enforcements. That'll be by Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Madam President. For council consideration, approval of the May certificates of appropriateness as recommended by the Norristown Historical Architectural Review Board for the following properties. Sorry. 545 Arch Street, 814 Arch Street, 619 Chain Street, 601 Cherry Street, 201 East Main Street, 368 East Moore Street, and 209 Noble Street.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the HARP certificates for the addresses that were mentioned by Mr. Singh? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and that motion is approved. I would like to make a motion to open the agenda for the purchasing of the advertisement of additional properties. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, what has been added to your agenda tonight, council members, is a draft or a proposed ordinance to essentially authorize and approve the form of agreement of sale as negotiated by the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for 12 parcels. The parcels are located along East Main Street and DeKalb Street. So before you tonight, we're asking, or Solicitor's office is asking for your approval to have this ordinance advertised for the next workshop meeting, which would be in June, at which time the ordinance would be considered by council.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Counsel, any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to advertise a draft ordinance to authorize the purchase of properties on East Main and DeKalb by the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Rebecca Smith, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. That motion is passed and approved. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? The ayes have it, meeting is adjourned.